The Situate School Committee is committed to providing an environment of respect during meetings. We ask all members to interact in a polite manner, even when there's disagreement. We value the participation of our community and want all participants, including marginalized and minoritized communities, to feel welcomed and respected. We ask our committee members and all who participate to commit to these standards to support and respect our community. The public comment will be available by Zoom. Community member and in person, community members can also email me and brandalini at sit.org with questions. I will call the meeting to order at seven thirty six, January thirtieth, twenty twenty three via roll call vote. Let's see. Long?
Yes.
Libbalm?
Yes.
Orfaski?
Yes.
Gate?
Yes.
Brandalini, yes. Great. We will start with public comment. Seeing no hands raised virtually. No one in person. Right, we'll move on with our student representatives, Ms. Ray Dal and Mr. Belver.
How about now? Alrighty, thank you for having us. Midterms concluded last week. Students should feel a great sigh of relief and sense of accomplishment after completing a rigorous set of seven exams over the course of four days. Congratulations to all. With midterms ending, quarter three has now begun. Students who took semester one classes have switched their schedule to a new class. Want to remind all that if semester one didn't go your way, it's a perfect time to turn that boat around and keep heading in the right direction. On Martin Luther King Junior Day, despite the inclement weather, there was a great attendance and several contributions from S H S students, including quotes read by Star. Performance from the Symphonic Band Enquirer, live art inspired by the energy of the event from senior Julia Levinson. And the first performance of the Gates and High School Step Team Souls of Rhythm. It was incredible community event and we're very proud to have the high school represented. Last week, a group of students and guidance counselors met with students at the Gates Middle School to discuss all aspects of the high school experience. Shin Yan Kua La, a group of A P Chinese students, prepared a cultural presentation to commemorate Chinese New Year last week, bringing in the year of the rabbit with students from Gates. Special thanks to Gates P T O, who funded the Hung Gar Kung Fu Dragon Dance to expand the celebration. School counselors will host an evening presentation for caregivers of college bound juniors on Wednesday, the eighth of February at six thirty in this very room. Purpose of the presentation is to provide an overview of the post-secondary process and all aspects involving that. I want to give a special shout out to the entirety of the student-run Situation School newspaper staff who take on the extra workload and face the wrath of the student editors for missed deadlines. We encourage you to check out their new material ranging from senior profiles to stories on local programs and sports.
And speaking of local programs, junior Lisa Kinley is working to expand the high schools recycling program. We encourage students to separate their trash and ensure they use the blue recycling bins that are now found in the cafeteria with plastic materials. Students are doing their last bits of research for the upcoming Bosman Conference next weekend. We've attended this conference before and had sex success. And this year's lineup includes committees from WHO, the Jedi Council, and the Queen's Gambit. I personally am doing the Red Lotus, which is inspired by the Avatar, the last Airbender series, and I'm very excited about that. I'm Kylie, if any of your kids are asking. This is a great chance for new MUN delegates to get their feet wet and we have more than thirty kids attending, which is very exciting. As we turn to a new year, it dawned on many seniors that are graduating, graduation is impending. And in ceremonial first step, we ordered our caps and gowns a few weeks ago. Free fun Fridays in back at Gates, starting on February third. Situate Rec Student Employees will be working with staff and situational police officers to provide some great Friday fun. Congratulations to Grace McNamara, who scored her one thousand points this past Friday night. It's a great win for her. Boys Basketball Coach Boyer will reach three hundred fifty career wins when the team wins their next game. And speaking of sports, here are the records for our sports teams as of today. Boys Basketball, ten and three. Girls Basketball, two and twelve. Wrestling, two and eighteen. Boys Indoor Track, one and four. Girls Indoor Track, three and two. Boys Swimming, four and one. Girls Swimming, four and one. Gymnastics, four and five. Boys Hockey, ten, three and two. And Girls Hockey, four and nine. And please answer them for questions, thank you.
Alright, thank you so much. Next on our agenda is the acceptance of gifts. We have Megan Gregory with the gift from Kate Pod.
Hi, on behalf of the elementary literacy specialists, we applied for a K five mini educational grant. We were awarded a four hundred ninety-two dollar grant to, or it was called the awareness fund, to make the awareness intervention kits for all of our schools so that individual kids can have manipulatives. Meaning awareness is an oral process where the kids are listening to sounds and relating sounds and words. And trying to do a little more hands-on and fun for kids. We're going to get up to like monkeys to stretch out the sounds and words. We're going to have views, the difference between the sound and the sound when they're looking and just other fun manipulatives to be able to hear sounds and words, which is a prerequisite for success.
Excellent. Right, do you have a motion to accept? I know. No pressure. I make a motion to accept with great appreciation the gift from Kate Pod five to the elementary school. Okay. Roll call vote. Lindblom?
Yes.
Orfaski?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Gate?
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah, thank you. Friends of South Shore Seafood and Ladies Fish Market, Holly Hill Farm with David Stevens, Food Services Director.
Alright. On behalf of the Food Services Department of schools, we wanted to accept gifts that have already happened.
Been digested.
And this has been, yeah, it's been a long time coming on five or six different occasions since two thousand nineteen, I think it was, two thousand eighteen. With the help of Joby Norton, Evan Norton of the Friends of the South Shore Seafood and Holly Hill Farm. We've kind of collaborated and done some farm to tray meals at the elementary schools, the middle school and at the high school. Each time, the fishermen of Situate provided over six hundred portions of so white fish primarily. And, and we put on, you know, seafood dishes for the students in the town of Situate. With that, Holly Hill Farm and John Belver have also been instrumental in kind of supplementing what the gardens of each school could not provide. The gardens were primarily, most likely planted by Mr. Belver and the folks and students at each, at each school. I've been very grateful in my time to be able to participate and collaborate with the gentleman. And, you know, I, I didn't, I think I did the numbers maybe in my letter. I don't have them here, but it's the tune of probably over ten thousand dollars of retail seafood over the course of five years for the three or four years. John has been instrumental in educating students at each school in gardening and where their food comes from. And it's so nice to be able to get food from our harbor or off our harbor to be able to provide nice nutritious and authentically local meals.
So my name is Kevin Norton, I have a Miss Emily in Situate Harbor. Dragger, working around. And, yeah, we love this. This is a great program. We're happy to help. Work with ladies, really does most fun, cutting bars. He's been able to, so it's great. It's a, it's, you know, it's a collaborative thing. I bring the fish in, I grow, we donate it to Joby. He cuts it, gets ready for the schools and it works out really well for everybody. I love the idea, I love to have kids hopefully bought in here. You know, something we Situate fishing need to stay in business, meet new customers. Customers and have students, you know, have kids go out to restaurants, order a fish taco instead of a burger. You know, I'd love to see that. You know, a lot of what we do is we do one of the Friends of South Shore Seafood Development. We're a five oh one C three four. You know, we, we can't take, we take donations. That's how we do a lot of this stuff. People donated money to our five oh one C. It's the way that we kind of keep it rolling so that it can take some of the cost away. But, you know, for the most part, it's, it's donations between me and Joby and the others. But we do have the, that's our Friends of South Shore Seafood Development. That's our nonprofit. Because, you know, in the future, I would, I love this program and I love to see this go more. You know, we have a bush and full of beautiful seafood right here. And I'd love to see it stay in town. That's my goal with this, is to see more of our seafood, stay in town and me not shipping it all over the country. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
And just quickly, that's my goal too. So I, I live in Situate, my name is John Belver, and I'm very fortunate to be outreach teacher and farmer at Holly Hill Farm, also a nonprofit, where we're able to work with students and in this case Lauren Esker, the senior of the high school, was doing an internship with Greg Leary's class. And sort of with some assistance, she was able to bring in some press coverage and organize with Joby Norton and Ladies and therefore with Kevin and with David Stevens, Food Service Director. We also made some salsa from the garden, we were able to accompany the fish at the, at the high school and at Gates. And it's just a real nice preview and foreshadow and as well as looking back as to what can be done. We grow locally when we're able to have the support of P T Os and the shore at the high school and other entities that are able to support our teaching in the six Citra Public Schools. Very delighted. On another side note, a lot of the work that I do is around compost. So we make a lot of compost at Holly Hill Farm to feed our soil. And I took several totes of fish guts and fish parts, which appear yucky, but any indigenous buffalo dog person will tell you how important that is for healthy soils. We took a couple totes of those and put them right into the compost system. So keeping it local, we certainly kept, kept that in mind. And I want to try to definitely keep growing and collaborating and teaching with students in Situate.
Thank you so much, that's fantastic. You know, the tacos got rave reviews in my house, too.
They sold out at the middle school.
Yeah. And totally agree on additional collaboration and keeping it local is super important. So, so much appreciation for all of your work. Mr. Stevens, just to acknowledge your, thank you for your service, the Citrate Public Schools, and best wishes on your next chapter and endeavors. Appreciate you.
Thank you. It's been fun.
Anybody else? I have a motion.
We just, that would great appreciation. Fish talker day at all three of our school levels.
Okay, roll call vote. Lindblom?
Yes.
Orfaski?
Yes.
Gate?
Yes.
Long?
Yeah.
Brandalini? Thank you all so much again.
Thank you. Thank you.
Alright, next on our agenda, celebrate student learning, Cushing Elementary School. Principal Scott Williams and company.
Good evening. It's my honor and privilege to present to you the Cushing Celebration of Learning. I'm Scott Williams, the newly hired principal. I'm very proud to be here with my team tonight. I'd like to introduce my colleagues, Alex Nash, who teaches first grade, Christine Oliveri, our library instructor. And then our closer tonight will be Jackie Aldala from our kindergarten team. So thank you very much for giving us this time to present to you some initiatives that we're exceptionally proud of at Cushing Elementary School. I'd like to start with a shout out to our Cushing P T O. They have been fundamental partners right from out of the gate when I started in July. They've been very receptive and responsive and helpful. And I also have to give kudos to our school council members, which segues to our pillars because as the stakeholders on, on our board at Cushing, they helped craft and devise our plan moving forward. So thanks to the Cushing School Council members. Our driving pillars, pillar one, culture of collaboration and personalization. By June twenty twenty-three, the Cushing community will meet the diverse needs of all students socially, emotionally, and academically. And staff by focusing on creating safe and welcoming environment. So this is a fundamental need. All of our, our children, our staff, our families, they need to feel welcomed and celebrated and embraced at Cushing Elementary School. We work very hard to walk the walk and not talk the talk to support these pillars. Some venues that we accomplish this, as you can see in the photo, Mr. Jamil Adams is our Director of Diversity, Equity, Inclusion for Citrate Public Schools. He is vivacious and, and a brilliant person who is definitely helping us to drive our diversity initiatives. We also have worked very closely with Greg Leary, dissecting and unpacking care data, which is a metric that measures our students' well-being. Their social connection to the Cushing community. We also have student support teams in place. And then our CAT community meetings, which is our positive behavior intervention system, which P B I S, I'm sure all of our schools at Situate are adopting this. So we celebrate that through those venues. And then our second goal, the Cushing community will actively cultivate a culture of equity and excellence by creating and sustaining curriculum and institutional practices. Some ways that we accomplish this at Cushing, our data team meetings, we have formed a data team, which is composed of lower elementary, upper elementary, and curriculum people at Cushing. We have our wind blocks in place, response to intervention protocols, three-tiered approach. We collaborate at common planning time meetings every week. I meet with our grade levels, K to five. We also have data team meetings, which we unpack, working with our curriculum coaches. So these are some ways that we support our pillars at Cushing. Thank you, Mrs. Nash. How do we celebrate student learning? So the picture here, again, many of our programs would not be possible without the help of our hardworking generous P T O. So our second graders celebrated a trip to Africa in the Cushing cafeteria. They visited Egypt, Cape Town, and Kruger National Park. This kinesthetic activity, you can see it's a whole body immersion celebration. That's one example. But obviously, we have our community CAT meetings, more about this later. George, the chair, he's kind of a celebrity at Cushing. It's a chair that I announce on Fridays, which classes earn time with George. And often it's based on academic achievement or rigorous learning project that grades and teams have worked together. So we celebrate students. Our kindergarten team celebrates a hundredth day, which is approaching very fast. This is a very important principle, the power of ten, base block, ten blocks in, in the basic fundamentals of mathematics curriculum. We have enrichment assemblies. Last week, we celebrated a Chinese acrobat named Li Lo. She was from Beijing, and that was a truly spectacular event that happened at Cushing. It was well received, extension enrichment activity. We also have our S T math rewards today, we announced, which K to two, three to four, four to five earn their G Gs, which is something that I know Heather Allen is working very hard across the district and certainly at Cushing. And then we also have our extension enrichment clubs that we formed this past fall. We are very fortunate and blessed to have the hardworking staff at Cushing. We had a crochet club, clay club, homework club, and legging club. So those are just some of the ways that we celebrate student learning at Cushing. And now I'm going to turn this over to Alex.
Thank you. Alright, so how does Cushing celebrate academic achievement? So we have a lot of this at Cushing. For starters, we have Lexia Superstars. All students in our grades in our school have Lexia, and it is a great platform. And when students complete a level, they earn a printed out certificate and then they get to pick a prize from the prize box, which is a huge steal for an elementary kiddo. And then for S T math, as Mr. Williams was saying, we have Gigi the Penguin, who is the mascot, if you will. And you can see him in the picture right in front of us in the front. So that's Gigi. And the class with the most completed puzzles per month gets to have Gigi in their classroom, which is super fun. And then we have the wind block achievement. And this is how we use data to drive the small group instructions. And in those groups, students can track their own data and they actually make graphs to see how they are improving, which is wonderful and because they're able to clearly see it for themselves. And they also get house points for doing it. How does Cushing celebrate personal growth? So as Mr. Williams was saying, the P B I S community meetings are huge in our, in our school. Everyone is there. It is entertaining, it is welcoming, and it is super, super fun. We usually sit in our cat houses, so all students will sit in their specific cat house. We sing a song, Don't Give Up on Me by Andy Grammer, which everyone in our school community knows the words to. And if not, they're on the board and Mr. Munt is singing along and it's just a powerful moment to be there. And we do our pledge altogether. And this is a time for all of us to learn how to grow and support one another by showing love, demonstrating inclusion, and also building our trust. We also had a kindness compliment wall at the beginning of the school year. Mr. Williams had us write our child's or students' names on an index card. And just to share one special thing about each specific child. And parents came in and that was the first thing that they saw. And every single kid had a name on that wall. And it was just, it's just a beautiful way to show that everyone is included. So that was super nice. And then again, as Mr. Williams said, we have George the Chair, which is a tradition that Mr. Williams started at Cushing. And when he notices a classroom working really hard, following classroom routines, doing what's expected, that class gets George the Chair for a week and he is a superstar. So yeah, that's George. And then lastly, how does Cushing celebrate staff? I am new to Cushing School and I, since day one, have felt so welcomed and appreciated by staff and the community. And in the beginning of the year, we had a teacher, back to school, fun stuff, which was really great. I felt very welcome. We have this board on the screen. As soon as you walk in, you get to meet our Cushing rock stars and you get to see, you know, that we're not just teachers and that we have a family and that we have a life. And, you know, we're important. And it's great to see all of us right there as soon as you walk in. As I said, I, this is my first time here at Cushing, so I haven't had a teacher appreciation week yet. But the P T O, as Mr. Williams was saying, is incredible. And I've heard that they'll do, you know, lunches or special treats, so I'm really looking forward to that. And then skipping ahead, Mr. Williams does a Friday kudos poem, which is so, so special and so unique. And he spends a lot of his own time creating a poem that's unique to one specific person. And it's beautifully written. And he notices one special teacher or staff member and gives a poem about them. And then we have to guess who it is. And then it's announced and everyone goes wild, even if it's not like your class, if it's for another class teacher, the whole class is like, yeah! And it's really, really lovely. And then that teacher gets a rock star parking spot for the whole week right in front. So that is very, very special. And then everyone knows you're the rock star. So thank you, Mr. Williams.
I was the first rock star. Can I just? Anyway. How does Cushing celebrate students? Well, I'm blessed to be part of the Cushing Lit Team. And we meet weekly with Mr. Adams and Cushing staff members and along with our Lit Team student members. We meet to learn and about meaningful topics and truly spread love, inclusion, and trust throughout our school with magnificent posters and slideshows that we have up on our TV screens in the school. It's been really wonderful for me to be part of this. Our student body members have grown from ten to sixty this year and they love it. It's great. And we're going to be bigger and better every year. And I know we are. So it's been really fun with them. Okay, so often our school gets together to celebrate both our winning CAT communities that are doing a great job. But also just to take the time to get together, as we did in the slides from December, to have a little fun and show our entire school body how proud we are of them and all their hard work. So it really is a wonderful thing. All teachers, all students, all get together in the cafeteria and just share, share some time together. It's important to do that. Hi, everyone. So when we think about how does Cushing celebrate students? First few things when you get back to school, Mr. Williams brought a Cushing Back to School Ice Cream Night, which was super fun. And then we also have our kindergarten playdate. Both of these are great ways after a long summer to get the families and the kids back and ready as a whole group. You know, the kids are really excited as they get back to school to think of who's in their class and who they might meet. So we'll provide really good opportunities for parents and students to get to know who will be in the class that year. We also, like Christine mentioned, have the Lit Team. Most recently, they made Lunar New Year lanterns and displayed them around the school, which was a great celebration. And they worked really hard on them and it's very special that they, those students work, teaches us about different important topics. And what are we looking forward to? We still have a long part of our school year left. All Cushing teachers and staff members.
All Cushing teachers and staff members are working, looking forward to all students meeting or exceeding benchmarks, standards with the use of our wind blocks, the what I need time before this. That can look a variety, in a variety of ways. Some kids get extra doses. Other teachers differentiate based on what the kids need, which is really important. And then we're also looking forward to our ongoing community outreach program that looks super different. It's kind of nice this year with the pilot. The teacher's been super creative. I know I'm working on progress reports with the kids' pictures, just to give a parent's a glimpse of how their student is transitioning into kindergarten. And then you are looking at my favorite slide personally, not just because I have it, because of what it represents. This is the kindness compliment board that Alex is mentioning. So like she said, every student on there has their name up with a nice compliment from a fellow classmate. You know, it represents collaboration. I know on my team, the art teacher, Mrs. Davis, took it upon herself to have each child in kindergarten draw a nice picture because she knew that not all of our kids are ready to write words or sentences. And that's just one example of how collaborative our team is as a staff body. And there will be so many takeaways from tonight, but I hope one of them is this, because I feel like it shows how tight of a community we are and just how all teachers and staff care about the whole child and their success. So thank you guys for having us so much.
Thank you for the opportunity to present this evening. We're happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you so much, Cushing. Any question?
I'm like the jinx when it comes to the mics. So normally I have lots of questions, as if you've ever tuned in before, Mr. Williams. But surprisingly, I don't have any questions. I just want to commend you for the work that you're doing with your team. And as someone who bugs Bill a lot about belonging, I can't help but point out that using a poem as a way to honor the staff couldn't be a better way to cultivate an atmosphere of belonging. I mean, it's more than just a reward. It's really seeing the staff, and I just, I can see some head nodding. So I just, I just wanted to say that, that I just really am grateful that that work is being done in your building. So thank you for that, for that.
You're welcome. Thank you.
I will say I've been in there twice. Do you just do them on Friday?
Fridays.
So twice. I've been a mystery reader on Fridays, and I've heard them, and it is adorably amazing. It's just great. And even I'm like, you know, like you have the two lines in, and then you make you see what else he said.
I have uncanny abilities to write poetry. I don't know why. It's usually in the cadence of Dr. Seuss.
Yeah, I know, yeah.
You know, it's only, well, the end of January, so you've been with us for five months. It's amazing. Everything that you've put in place to make everybody feel important, and that's, that's why we're here. Thank you.
That's, that's very kind. Thank you. But I have to, I have to authentically, truly say, it really hasn't, it's been a team. It really has been the entire building. All the parents have been very welcoming, the staff. It's truly, so thank you for that. But it really just is, has not just been me.
See Peter, but I'm assuming if he wants to jump in. All right. Well, thank you all so much. We appreciate your time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, Megan Gregory back. With Caitlin Bergeron, up to discuss English Language Arts, pre-K to twelve literacy.
So I'm Megan Gregory.
And I'm Caitlin Bergeron. I am the intern from EUN.
And we just like to go through some highlights of what English Language Arts, pre-K to twelve, does to celebrate student learning and reading, writing, speaking, and listening. We're going to highlight some of those things that we do as teachers of reading and writing to celebrate our student learning. On this first slide, we have our first graders of Jenkins celebrating the end of their My Neighborhood unit in our new My View program. Their first unit was about neighborhoods. They read about neighborhoods. They wrote about them. They did discussions about neighborhoods. And the first grade team had a block party at the end where the kids created a neighborhood in the hallway. They turned on music in the hallway, and the kids got to visit each other's classrooms at the beginning of the year. They could block party, got to know each other as a first grade community, which was just a great celebration every day they've been part. Thinking about recognizing academic achievement, one thing we've been doing in the elementary schools this year for the first time is sharing our K to five benchmark achievement with families three times a year. So all elementary families got a letter in October letting them know how their student performed on the benchmarks and literacy map that we administer three times a year. They'll be getting their next letter from the middle of the year benchmark, which we have transitioned. So now we'll be on testings. We'll be able to kind of look back and see the entire student progress through the year, which is a great collaboration that Steve Drexler's really helped us with, so that we're able to kind of let try to keep that information. Just some great news this year, after we gave our middle of the year benchmarks. Our first grade cohort in elementary schools, our first cohort that has had foundations in kindergarten and now in first grade. Eighty-one percent of our first graders are meeting for state benchmarks on DIBELS, which measures early literacy indicators, which is so exciting. It's made a ton of growth, and we're just seeing amazing progress, growth, and achievement with kids, making sure that we're using a systematic and explicit approach to finance. We also administer the STAR, and in the beginning of the year, sixty-one percent of our students were at or above benchmark. And now in the middle of the year, seventy-one percent of our students are at or above benchmark. So teachers and students are only working hard, and we're moving towards progress, and that's for grades two to nine.
So at the middle school, iXL is an online software that teachers use to supplement their instruction, especially with our literacy team. In the past month, students that are in grade six through eight, who are receiving literacy support, have made significant progress or strengthening their skills. These students have demonstrated growth in, on average, five different skill categories, and typically will spend a minimum of three minutes each week during their measurement block to work on guided and interactive practice. To celebrate their growth and their achievement, students have made bar graphs, which look very similar to the ones that are pictured here with our elementary students. But they've been developed to help them visualize their progress towards these goals. It's been wonderful to observe the students investing in their own learning and feeling excited when they're practicing within a given field area. That's usually shown in the bar graphs, reaches, or even surpasses the goals that they had set for themselves earlier this year. And then at the high school, students, as mentioned in the report from our, from our students earlier this evening, students that officially completed their first semester of the school year with the grading period for a quarter to ending today. Each quarter, students have the chance to be recognized by staff and students for their commitment to that. They trust core values, observe, achieve, invest, and learn. But the members of the ELA department specifically at the high school each took time to recognize at least one student. For many of them, it was more than that, who exemplified achievement and investment within their respective English classes this past quarter. Last Thursday, those students were recognized or presented with a sale award. And I think it's also worth noting that three of our ELA teachers were nominated for those. So this slide is intended to highlight not only how the English department celebrates students, but how we promote the practice of students celebrating other students. So working from left to right, there is an image of students in grade eight who have been working on some op-ed and then received a visit from some high school seniors who came in to give them feedback, as well as some positive praise for their writing. Pictured in the middle up at the top is a, is a display of student work that's on, up on one of the walls in one of the ELA classrooms. But this is simple practice for most of our ELA teachers. Below that is a little highlight from the situational, which is our high school newspaper, where articles are published frequently to celebrate what's happening in and around situational and celebrate the awesome work that our students are doing.
And our students in the young in kindergarten, we recognize them as authors and we celebrate them as authors. And we teach kids how to appreciate each other's writing. And this is a kindergarten classroom at Wofford Park where one student is sharing his writing that he worked on, and the kids in this classroom were amazing, giving really specific compliments. I loved how you described colors in your picture. I loved how you use describing word. I loved how you served the capital and then with the period. So kids are really learning to appreciate each other as writers, and we're celebrating keeping our young students as authors at the end of the unit, and we're making sure that kids are published authors each year. Some things that we're looking forward to are getting to use those K to five mini grant, manipulative kits. We're going to have set for a small group in each school, so that we're going to be able to use those during intervention times with kindergarten and first grade students, which will be an extra boost in community awareness, which is awesome. Heather Allen, who is the elementary STEM coordinator, and I are going to be having family information nights for elementary parents. Our next one coming up is going to be on February eighth, next Wednesday at Cushing, from five to six. We will be talking with parents about the literacy map curriculum, expectations that all your children at home, and we'll have different topics each month. Through the end of the year.
At the middle school, one of the things that the LA is looking forward to is the creation stage of a grade eight community bureau. This was made possible by an enrichment grant from the PTO. So the idea is that students will be working to put together a display of Jose tiles in alignment with some of the lessons and takeaways that they have discussed from reading the giver, celebrating individuality within community, and then actually putting that into this life. So that is going to come to fruition in the next few months. And then at the high school, we're looking forward to our continued partnership with Math Insight. This is an organization that has worked to supplement what we do here with AP ELA coursework and preparing students for the AP ELA exams. We have block exams scheduled here for those ELA courses in February.
Awesome pictures of our students. Be excited about writing, speaking, and what pretty much is the most important in tests. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. That's great. Okay, questions?
So thank you so much for that presentation. And congrats to the first graders and the improvements you're seeing in the other grades. It's fantastic. I just have some questions, and it's mostly because I'm getting questions from parents. And so I always like to sort of arm myself with the information. So as I'm sure you're well aware, this is more the elementary school. You know, there's been some turnover at Hatherley around reading, in particular with Mrs. Burns leaving. And so I think there's still concern that that's been a hard position to fill. And so I'm just wondering, what are you doing? What are the, what's the thinking around making sure that the students have, you know, what they need to continue the great progress we're seeing in your presentation?
Yeah, so I actually was just in all of the data meetings at Hatherley over the last weekend half. Half of the data assessment, we sat down, looked at the data, really went through, you know, what kids are making progress, but kids still need some support, and went through all of the data, student by student, thinking about, you know, let's go to students by similar needs, and let's find the best person to help the students. Sometimes it is literacy specialist, special educator, sometimes it's a classroom teacher. But we really work hard with the best, even to make sure that kids are getting what they need, better getting it.
Awesome. That's great, be able to relate to parents. The other question was more of a curiosity, because legitimately, it's not an area that I understand. I have second graders and a fifth grader, so I'm learning as I go. So with respect to writing, can you sort of help me understand, is there a curriculum for writing for like second, third graders? Because all I see my kids do is they, they do the like, that daily, what we did well in school, and they're writing that. And I can barely understand it. They have to tell me what it looks like. And so I'm just wondering, what's that look like at the younger grades, and how are we monitoring their progress? And what, as parents, should we be noticing and looking forward to sort of be checking in with our teachers?
So I think one of the things that is probably hard to see in K to the day is there's two kinds of writing that we're starting from kindergarten all the way up, which is some response to reading. So whenever the kids are reading, we're responding in discussion. We're also responding in writing. So kids are learning from kindergarten first grade to find evidence in the text. It might be in the picture, in kindergarten first grade, and they're learning to pull evidence in the text, respond to text. So that's part of it. We're doing that through our new Mic program that kids are making sure that they have explicit responses to text as they're reading. We're also working on a longer piece of process writing at any given time. So if you take a look, every grade has a curriculum map of here are the types of writing that we're doing at different times of the year. All kids throughout, at some point throughout the year, are working on a narrative, informational text, and opinion text. And through that process writing, you're not seeing things come home because they're working on it for three or five weeks, going through the brainstorming, drafting, revising, editing, looking at writer's craft to make, to make it better. So that's one of the things that you see, like a celebration at the end of a month, or a month and a half for two months. The kids are publishing a book. They've been working really hard the last six weeks to write this book that they're now going to publish. So there's kind of those two sides to the writing.
Regarding the DIBELS scores, you said were increased. What, you said it was eighty-one percent?
So our first graders, eighty-one percent of our first graders right now are meeting for a special.
Compared to like in previous years, what? Would that be?
So if they have that. So I don't have that in front of me right now. I'm happy to.
Okay, so maybe before the, before the new literacy program, like what we're seeing. I mean, I don't think it's that.
So I, I will say that last year, I don't, I don't have the numbers in front of me, so I don't want to.
But it wasn't any more.
But we, last year, just the first year, we sang explicit phonics program. We saw a dip. So in 2020, 2021, we saw a big dip, and then last year, when we started using by the end of the year, that dip that we had seen. So we are back to think over that one more. And our growth.
Could you say that really into the mic?
So that came about when you had the beginning of the year meetings for the benchmark meetings that they do for holding on Zoom and everything. I think that's an extra. That's not common for most school districts to do. So much appreciated. And you very humbly mentioned those things then. So please, if you can, blast it out.
Both the achievement and the growth. The biggest growth that we had and the best achievement that we had.
In, in, and at great levels.
It's so DIBELS, we, DIBELS goes from K to four, but we zoom in on those K to two kids who are using foundations and really getting that explicit instruction.
I think I'm so happy to hear that. We closed that gap, and they're doing a little better, especially at that age. Because I think, you know, going through COVID, all the, you know, the concerns, not just us, but like people across the country had about that.
not just us, but like people across the country had about that, those young, those young kids who, you know, they've learned to, they learn their language, they're mimicking and, you know, reading lips and, you know, the visuals and everybody was so concerned about them, they missed out on that. And then so that is fantastic. But that was just strictly the, those first grades. The first grade. The eighty-one percent is the first. Okay, yes. And how about like other, other grades? I'm happy to, I, I have all that data. I'm happy to pull that. Okay, tomorrow. Yeah.
Thank you for being this good. It was a, a great presentation. And one of the things that really stood out to me was where you were talking about like the high school kids coming down and working with the middle school kids, kids providing feedback in class. And when like Hatherley, I know they did the writing workshop a couple of times. People are really excited to share the writing. Is that like a common thing that's happening on our regular basis in our classrooms? Like a high school is normally coming down to the middle school or the elementary school?
Yeah, yeah, I can speak for middle and high school that the E L A teachers are really eager to collaborate. And we are lucky to be, you know, on the same camp, on the same campus and kids can go during their English classes. So this was the most recent one in grade eight, but they've done it in, in each of the middle school grades. I know I'm sure historically we've done it and I taught an English class at the high school.
That's great. Because even when you see the, you know, for the next week, you see the excitement of the kids and how much they're, they're really into it and then, you know, keeping that going is, is good to have. So thank you.
Checking in on our online.
Well, I'm good. I just have a, I guess a question. The, the situation, is that promoted throughout the community? Or is it just really advertised to the high school aged readers?
They do a really great job to promote the readership and extend it outside of, of the high school community. Obviously, it's tied to our advanced journalism class here at the high school, but the work that the kids are doing, the interviews that they, they pursue, the stories that extend far beyond that. So we hope that people are going online and reading. I know they care deeply about what we're doing.
Okay, thank you.
I, I would also just like to say I love the, hearing the stories of the peers celebrating each other's writings. And I hope my, my colleagues will start complimenting me on capitalizing in periods. That's just saying.
Doing great.
I just have a quick comment. So thank you for coming tonight. There's something that I noticed that is sort of a broad goal that's been on the table probably since before I was even around, just to see the four elementary schools having sort of this authentic situat experience is clear. Just between pushing, you can see if they're nicely labeled, as were Mr. Williams's. But if they weren't, you couldn't tell where a child was learning in second grade at any of the four schools. So while we love and respect every teacher's unique, you know, stamp of self that they put in their classroom, it's clear the effort and the energy by administration, staff, teachers, everyone that, all the kids coming up to gates are coming from Cituit Elementary School, no matter which part of the town that they've been educated in. So I think that's something, and I know that that's a continued effort, but I can see that really clearly. And tonight was like a, definitely saw that. So thank you. Exactly. Program of studies for Cituit High School. Our second reading here tonight on that.
Hey, everybody. Thank you for having me again. I'm sort of hoping for a vote on the program of studies that we, that I presented at the last meeting. The faculty as well, and I'll be able to move forward with course selection. On the, the justice that are involved. Maybe I'm looking for thirty. Anybody have any questions?
I just have one, and it's just a general question. The program of studies is on the school website, correct?
The draft that I shared with you is not on there, but it went, it's wanted to prove it will be on probably.
Yeah, I was looking, I couldn't find it. I was just wanting to make sure it was up there.
Absolutely.
I may make a motion that the school committee vote to approve the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four Cituit High, High School Program of Studies. Brandalini, yes. Yeah, they're asking, yes.
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 Thank you very much.
Assistant Superintendent Driscoll with school calendar also second reading.
Just before we get to the calendar, I just checked right now. If you go to sit dot org slash S H S and in the search bar, right, program of studies, it comes up as the first one. So if people are looking for things on the website, I would highly recommend using that search bar or whatever school you need. But it pulls up, if you want to check it out, and for sure, students, we send it to our digital. So there's nothing new. School calendar was in your backup pack. It's the family calendar. We have the start dates, the tentative end dates, the professional, the both the two days where we will not ask for the professionals and the teachers. Anywhere any questions?
I just have one.
You look like you have a question.
At some point, though, it is just maybe this will come back at some point to the second page. Correct? Or is that all just part of this vote? Okay, okay. I wasn't sure if that was going to be amended at some point, just so someone doesn't see this come back on the agenda later.
No, we're hoping that this is not. So there's no changes from this current stat change.
I, I think it was a community request last year along with families to get this done. I'm sure earlier when we did our communication plan and calendar, this was moved up to January. So it's a great question because we used to do it in two pieces just to get word out. We were scrambling with March and the second piece was in April. But I want to thank Ms. Driscoll and the special team for collaborating that was done early.
Yeah, I was trying to make sure that will change. Yeah, because in previous years we voted two or three times, just to make sure that, you know, in March, we're not going to come back and change something. It's not going to say draft.
And the teachers watching out there, surprise from teachers that the teacher version for certain things that the general public does need to know, they'll get this, this week as well.
Yeah, we appreciate you moving this forward and sort of switching up your, making it kind of a priority. I think it's helpful for families to, you know, for planning purposes and teachers, everyone.
So like you said, the dates exist. I do want to say, if in the future there is a reason why we would need to change the calendar, we would have to come back. But this right now, it's not a case of thesis. Hopefully, once this is improved, we can start planning our next change. That being said, I will. I'm really straight. I did not. Thank you. I make a motion that the school committee vote to approve the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school calendar. Brandalini, yes. Limblon? Yeah. For pumpkin? Yeah. Long? Yes.
Yes.
So new business here. We have out of state field trip. Principal McGuire. I'm sorry, Anne Z. Ryan in the school counseling department. Hello.
Yes, Ms. Ryan is here as one of the chaperones of the trip and she's been lost a little bit. So I was willing to take our group of students to the New England Institute of Technology, which is the island. We had a handful of students apply this year. We've done a lot of our own campus. I was collaborating with a special education teacher and we thought that it gave a great opportunity for some of our students to live at this school and learn a little bit more. It's a lot of, you know, obviously at college, but it's also very, very focused. It's very fast and certificate programs. So we thought it would be a great opportunity for some of our students to see this world.
I make a motion that the school committee approve the out of state field trip on April fifth, twenty twenty-three to the New England Institute of Technology in Rhode Island. Second. Brandalini, yes. Limblon? Yes. For asking? Yes. Long? Yes. Kate?
Yes.
Great. Thank you so much. Right, leadership reports, superintendent Burkhead, as well as assistant superintendent Driscoll. Team, team up.
Good evening, everyone. Put a great follow up to our guest earlier today about fresh, healthy food. Food service is such an important topic. As we talk about the development of the whole child, so I want to thank the committee. Ms. Brandalini has been talking to me about food services and, you know, how we operate those types of things. And the timing is good because Davis Stevens' last day was today. And I want to thank him for his several years of commitment and excellent work here in the district and wishing, wishing the very best. But we thought it was an opportunity to, with the new director coming in, to have a thought exchange and get everyone's opinion on the food services, what's similar to last year's, well, everything in general. We narrowed the focus down to food services on, you know, what things are going well, what things can we improve on? And where some ideas folks have. It's now we're going to get a snapshot of that. Typically, what we've been doing also in our, part of our communications plan is to send out more detailed and more information, basically the whole kind of summary and detail of the thought exchange to the community this week. So you'll have, be able to dive down as deep as you want, share the whole thing with the community. This will also go to Mr. McGair and the staff to look at and work with us and the station as they come up with their plan to keep things going great, to improve on some new ideas and maybe attacks and moaning food. That we'll share tonight. So I'll, I'll turn this over to Ms. Driscoll and we'll work on this together.
So I just want to thank one more time the interview committee for the food services director. She is will tell you that she and Courtney Delise, who are our parents, one of them, were very excited about us doing this thought exchange because that was a part of why they got involved. Because they wanted people to have more voice. So I also want to thank them for getting the word out for our great participation. So the question we used are, what are some things that Cituit Public Schools should consider stopping, starting, or continuing to do in our school cafeterias and during breakfast and lunch? So we have eight hundred and forty-one participants, which is incredibly great for any school survey. This is, this has exceeded our expectations with just the accessibility. There were six hundred and eighty-seven thoughts and there were over eighteen thousand ratings. That is a lot of engagement. So what we did this time was we broke out the results into parent caregiver group and student group. So parent and caregivers only saw responses, parent and caregivers, students saw students. So we had three hundred and sixty-seven responses from parents and caregivers. And for students, we had four hundred and thirty-five responses. And if you look at balances out at the, in the parent section, there's more participation at the elementary level and of course, the older students participate more. So this is something that should look really intuitive. It's our word cloud. So what happens is during the exchange, this is actually live and it moves. And so as we're checking in, it's hard not to make judgments right in the middle of it because it moves. But this is both students and parents, what the topics were that came up the most. We can see what just jumps out visually, water, fresh choices, healthier options. And continue, a lot of people wanted us to continue pretty much in free breakfast. So our key themes, number one or both, this is students and parents, free water, fresh food, healthy choices, breakfast options, of course, the word. Lots of people have opinions about pizza Fridays and who's got the best pizza. Comments about salad bars and snacks and of course. So for students, and this is something we, if we made our own survey, I don't think we would have asked a survey question about water. But for students, the top thoughts were all about adding water instead of milk or an issue to milk with our lunches. So right now it's available for purchase. But there's, it's, it's out that we need more accessibility to it. So parents and caregivers too, the sentences are much more beautiful here. That they want options in addition to the chocolate milk and the right amount of milk and we should be eating our own water. So even though those are usually, a thought exchange does not come out with such near top thoughts that are literally on the same topic, this one happened to. And then what we're going to share out with the community is the same type of deep dive. The same type of deep dive that we shared with our district results. And it will show, so this one is parent one. It gives a breakdown and then you can go see every single top thought. And if you're interested in learning about something or finding out what people said about a certain topic, I encourage you to use that, use that search bar. So local, local days when you can get a loose fish and call me up, please. And that comes up, you can search for whatever you'd like to. Let's see, so that you can look at the thoughts themselves, the highest to lowest screen, pull things out and then you can look at the thoughts by. All right, so we have a deep dive with the parent results, deep dive with student results that will be available this morning. And I didn't plan this, but that is a student who gets enjoying a fish taco. The next step that we have, as Superintendent Burkhead explained to you, we're sharing the thought exchange results. Our director of food services will analyze the feedback with the staff and he will create an empty, an entry plan to implement new practices, maintain best practices and start to learn about. We'd love to answer any questions. Thank you. My comment on the whole thought exchange, it's great to see the, the amount of participation. And I suspect that the more we use this, the more people participate. It's so much better than we'll survey monkeys. I mean, they, they serve their purpose, but this is, you know, they, people want to give feedback that they feel will be listened to, not just say like, yes, no, or, you know, this is fantastic. We got in the water. I think, I don't know why it's not included in the launch, but. You do. State doesn't turn our heart to. Oh, okay.
Reimburse with state.
Okay.
Doesn't mean we can't make it happen.
Okay. But that leads me to my next question. I know that during COVID, we stopped using the bubble.
But that leads me to my next question. I know that during COVID, we stopped using the bubblers. Or is there any change with that? And I know we had like the filtered water to refill water bottles. Are those back up and running?
Yes.
Okay.
But it is ironic that. The state doesn't reimburse us with water.
So I guess I didn't know as a parent that, I knew we had kind of shut down the bubblers through COVID and stuff, but. Maybe, you know, knowing that they're up back up and running, the, you know, communicate that. They can give water bottles.
Yeah.
Well, that's the other thing, I think, from an environmental and climate sort of. Position, we've got to figure out like what makes the most sense to, to cut filtered water so that kids can continue to bring in bottles? Or do we really want more plastic in the environment? I don't, don't know that we want that. And honestly, I don't know about everybody else's kids, but my kids are very accustomed to taking the water bottle. So being able to fix the bubblers, or we, I call them water fountains from Maryland. I was curious, you had said the question was. What they want, what they don't want. I'm just wondering like, what was, what were sort of some of the other comments in terms of what parents and kids don't want to have anymore? I was curious. That all seemed very positive. So I'm just wondering.
I don't think there's anything people want stopped. I think people want more is what most of the comments were.
Okay.
It wasn't stopped except from where it was at. So add choices, add farm to.
Okay.
Add. Add green water.
Yeah, I was just going, by the way, the question was worth it to see what else you were learning on that side in terms of changes.
Yeah, I think chocolate milk was a stop. A lot of chocolate milk guys just saw that. Some pizza, some people believe the pizza, something. It's, there was, it's things like that, so it was more, you know.
Yeah.
So that was people thinking environmentally, so.
Bring back the orange chicken was. I read all the kid, the student comments. I had one child that was enthusiastic about the thought exchange. He would have rathered to complete that than somewhere. So we read all the comments. But I would recommend search for a word you're interested in. And to that, search for, that's why there's so many ratings. I was also, it was interesting to see. Coffee came up a lot. Like offering coffee for middle school and high school.
I mean, it's crazy. Wasn't a thing. Back in my day.
And kids that aren't, it's something I didn't think of, is kids being hungry or not hungry at eight o'clock in the morning necessarily. And they have these sort of out of the box rolling breakfast idea. I don't know how that works in person, but. Interesting. They're not hungry when they get there, but then an hour later, they might be and how that.
I've seen it done in, we did it in our last high school, a la carte during passing periods. They could set up in the hallways and things like that. All those things are possible. You know, I guess, if we tell a new director to assess what we have now and, you know, talk about be the best district in the world, the best food services. Don't think anything that anybody's put down is out of the question. It's just that it's got our team together now that we have the information. And use that to. By their. Continue to do what we do.
I do feel too that the user friendliness. From it being the second one, knowing, based on your comments, seriously. We're familiar with it now, you'll probably continue to see engagement because of how.
I would like to just, sorry, to finish up, just somebody mentioned that people want to know their herd. That's the most important part of surveys that, is that, okay. They listen to what we share tonight. So at some point we'll have, you're going to settle down. His entry plan being shared. So this won't be the last 20 year bonus when we live on the spring. It was a year about how we use this data and our team uses data to make changes to it. Show the community we did listen, this one.
Yeah. After that, with the building use fee schedule, coach. Second reading tonight.
Don't have one of these to Bob.
Hey, you've seen the. Facility rental fee schedule. I haven't answered any other questions, but I would be looking for a motion to approve the modified. Updated building use fee schedule.
Yeah, I just had a question. So when the building fee schedule gets published, do we push that out to different groups or posted anywhere?
It's posted on the website and every time somebody requests to use the facility, they're going to, it's usually electronically.
But we're not blasting it out to groups to say, hey, the, the building's available or it's more of an after comes to us.
Yeah, they, they need to, there's, there's no push. Because they're, they're used pretty regularly.
Take a motion on that. I make a motion that the school committee approve the updated building use fee schedule. The first. Okay, long.
Yeah.
Brandini, yes. Limbong?
Yeah.
Rukowski?
Yeah.
Kate?
Yes.
Oh.
The other update that I wanted to provide you is related to the Jenkins roof. Sure you know that it leaks. It's been leaking for at least 10 years, not longer. We investigated having solar panels put on that roof in return for, you know, somebody redoing the roof. We've gotten a quote based on engineering to try to identify, we can't just replace the shingles. That's not the issue. Putting new flashing is not the issue. It's more of a structural component with the roof itself, not anything structural to the building. So the recommendation was to take everything off, including the paneling that's around the stacks and the hoopulas. We received a cost for that. The cost to do that wouldn't allow us to also do solar panels. There's not enough problem with solar panels. To warrant the expense of that roof. Superintendent and I have met with the town administrator. This project was approved as a capital project at the fall town meeting. So it's been recommended that we move forward with putting this out to bid. And during this roof replacement, this is practical with the improvement following. So just wanted you to be aware of that when this work had been presented to the budget to the select board on Tuesday night next week. I will be mentioning this to them as well, so they're on there.
So our, our solar panels out of the question entirely at a later date or?
No. We, we certainly can do solar panels on that roof once the roof has been redone. We've got a price of eight cents per kilowatt hour for, for the solar panels. We would be, it's net metering credits, we would be buying the energy at eight cents per kilowatt, which is the same price that we've gotten for high school. So they're not out of the question. They've also approached us about doing. Parking line canopies, both at the Jenkins School and at the Gates Middle School. So those are our options as well. Try and offset some of our expenses.
I have a, I have a question.
Go ahead, Peter.
Bob, the, the, the town meeting approved the replacement of the roof. Did we, is the structural findings different from what we originally? I guess, is the cost of this structural improvement going to greatly increase the amount that we may need?
No, actually, what was approved at town meeting was $1.2 million approximately. And the quote that we got for the full replacement of all of the components I mentioned is $850,000.
That's good. That's great. But it still hasn't gone out for the bid?
No, it hasn't gone out for bid, but the quote that I got was within the last two months.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Do we know the amount of time it would take to replace the Jenkins roof?
That roof could probably be done in two to three weeks.
So looking at.
It's a summer project.
Based on, do we know enough in the market to be able to say it could be done this summer or is it going to kind of when the big goes out?
Labor wise, it could be done this summer. It's a materials question. I'm not sure what, you know, where we are with asphalt chingle and what's available for stock. So that's the uncertainty.
And do we know it could be done in piecemeal over time or would it really be a summer time job?
I, I would not recommend it be done in piecing. I'll just because of the uncertainty. You know, seams and whatnot and time, time passes.
Yeah, I'm trying to fix a groove and anything it would work, but.
Yeah, I mean, I, you know, you, you might be able to get somebody to do it in a, in a 12 to 15 day period, which might work over vacation. Particularly in April, we wouldn't be able to get it, you know. I envisioned a system.
If, for whatever reason, they couldn't get done in the summer, or like certain pockets of the roof, that we would try to get done in a quicker timeframe?
Probably not, because we can't identify where the water leaks from. So it wouldn't, it wouldn't make sense if some wanted to try and address the leaks.
Yeah, there's like one corner that we would really need to focus on now versus.
No, it, it, the water flows to the low point and so we can't see where it's coming in. We go, we see, can't see the entry point, we just see the exit point in the building. Stay here till you get to the one.
Minutes. Number nine. I make a motion that the school committee approve the December 9th, 2022. Kate?
Long?
Yes.
Brandini, yes. Limbong?
Yes.
Rukowski?
Yes.
Kate? We saw you. Kate, yes. Great. Orange?
There's one warrant. It is warrant S230119. For a total of $247,959.85. On our revolving accounts, the large expenses. From the athletic fee line item for the Kobe Cutler Center, $33,200. And that was for the ceiling replacement. Still to be done on that project for the floors and painting all the walls. From the IDEA special ed grant, $70,822.33 for special transportation and tuition. From our local budget, private school tuition, $41,749.11. Our electric utility bill, $40,745.31. And those are the only large expenditures. I've been answering questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Correspondences. For other business, anyone else that they can bring forward? Allison. Okay, next, future agenda items, anybody?
Actually, so the Hadley School Council met. I don't know, my days run together now, but we had a discussion about the pair data. It was a really lively discussion. And Principal Ward shared some of the current data. And it occurred to me and a few of the parents that I think the last time Mr. Raniere gave the presentation was, we were on Zoom. So it was sometime during the pandemic and I remember speaking to him about the data and it just struck me as, might be great if he could come and give us another presentation. I don't know, I just feel like I could use a refresher and now that we're also collecting data pre and post, and we've added the third graders, it might be good to, to hear from him. If we could make that request at some time.
Okay, thanks. Good. So Saturday's meeting for our budget workshop. Trying to potentially like to have it Zoom. And we're not sure if that can be a possibility. We might be able to work that out. That's for her, I guess, for now. You think, you want it on Zoom? Well, I think due to issues with like MTV, not, you know, no fault with theirs.
No, any updates month, whether we have any.
Yeah, I think we should have an answer by tomorrow.
Okay.
I think the issue is being able to provide a hybrid opportunity that we do now for Saturday morning. I'm going to run into some struggles with that, so may have. Maybe we have to make an alternate decision whether we go all Zoom to more people. Not one or the other, maybe it has to be an option based on moving ability to provide either that Saturday meeting. So a little more tomorrow and then you can get, you can see back and get, get that information out of the post as soon as possible.
Yeah. Sounds good. Just making sure parents. Stay alert.
Right.
Stay tuned.
Right, stay tuned for potential changes to the Saturday, February 4th.
It'll be like one degree.
I know.
If it's Zoom, I think we'll probably have more of them.
Yeah.
They'll go attending.
Yeah, so potential changes to Saturday, this coming Saturday, February 4th, 9:00 AM, budget workshop. Could potentially be changing to all virtual on Zoom depending on what happens tomorrow, but we'll get that out, change out. We'll get that out in timely fashion. All right. And then Monday, February 6th. So next meeting will be then at 6:00 PM and we will have the budget public hearing. That, I believe, is the hybrid, regular meeting style. If there's nothing else, and we'll entertain motion to adjourn.
Second. Long?
Yes.
Brandini, yes. Limbong?
Yes.
Rukowski?
Yes.
Yes.